That allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with our consent agenda. Do you have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the consent agenda as presented, including approval of minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting on June 13th, 2022, approval of the proposed accounts for payment, approval of budgetary receipts and expenditures for June 2022, approval of option students, and excuse the absence of Lisa Peiper.
Thank you, Doris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by ear and? Can I be real quickly? Oh, sorry, first. Treasury report, Jason?
So briefly, expenses for the month of June, bills totaled $455,224.16. Payroll was $1,676,747.49, and that brought our total expenses for the month to $2,131,971.64. Revenue for the month was $1,256,535.83, which is pretty typical for the month of June. We're now ten, twelve, four, five, six of the way through the budget cycle, and we've expended 79.89% of the budget, which leaves us in good shape for the final two months of the budget cycle. Just a quick reminder that we've now received our 10 monthly installments of state aid. So that means that in July and August, we'll be less $602,398 on the revenue side as we get into July and August for both of those months. So just as a reminder, July and August are typically two of the most lean months in the budget cycle at this point. So that's the Treasury report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Jason on the Treasury report? Okay, can I have your votes, please? And motion passes. So next is new building update, Mr. Alec DeLander.
Okay, so as everybody knows, we've been in the process of a building construction project for new PK V elementary school. A lot of that work has been happening behind the scenes with a high vision planning group, administration, teachers, multiple groups of staff members that have been together to talk about that project. And we now are at a point where we have a site plan developed and a building plan developed. And tonight, we're very fortunate to have BCDM Architects, which we hired to help us through this process, to present that. So at this point, I'm just going to ask Matthew, Jamie, and Pat to come up and have a seat, and they will guide us through what they have to present this evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are very excited to show you the updates for the plans and kind of give everyone kind of an overview of what we've been doing for the last few months here. So to begin here, we want to kind of split this up into three different subjects. And the first one is going to be the plan, a little bit about funding and about the timeline. But the plan is really what most people are here to see, and that's what we'll spend the bulk of our time on today. So looking at the plan, we're going to break it into four different areas. We're going to talk about the site, the floor plan, and some concepts, both interior and exterior. I'm going to go through as many of the things that we talked about in the last few months as we can here. Starting with the site here, we kind of want to zoom out very quickly and talk about kind of the vision for Beatrice here in the district and that centralized campus of moving all the students so they can be closer together here and just have that synergy on the eastern portion of the city. Looking at that vision here, this area, the north being the future site of the PK to Fifth, and the center part being the future middle school, and the south part being the high school, this is really what we're going to be looking at from a site plan standpoint. And to the left here, you can see all the work that has been established for the last several years and months to be able to make this a possibility here. So looking at that red area to the north here, I'm going to give you a little bit of orientation. The north is going to have Lincoln. On the right side of that image is 33rd Street. And on that top area where you see the green plat, that is going to be the proposed new site for the elementary here. And zooming in just a little bit right now. Again, we want to put this into context, this 80 acres, this first phase is going to be the elementary phase. Around 30 acres of that will be dedicated for the elementary school. This is a new six-and-a-half-section school, which contains preschool all the way through fifth grade. It'll have all the drives and parkings associated with the new school, and then playgrounds and any other amenities that again go along with the elementary. The second or the bottom two-thirds or the southern two-thirds of the site is going to be preserved for future work, but that future phase is going to be basically developed for a new middle school. And again, just knowing that and planning for that, that's been one of the bigger discussions for how we plan this elementary. But that middle school is going to house the sixth through eighth grade. It's going to have parkings and drives and a lot more of those activity centers and sports and amenities that you would associate with the middle school facility here. So that's really a kind of a high-level look at the 80 acres. And now again, we're going to zoom in here and kind of look right at that northern 30 acres and the elementary in this current plan right now. So when we looked at this site plan, I mean, when we started to develop the site, we wanted to really focus in on circulation and kind of the three goals of the board, safety being one of the first ones, and from a site standpoint, that's a good starting point. So the circulation here, we are planning on having the main circulation off of 33rd. We will have a secondary entrance or the bus entrance off of that north Lincoln. And then we're going to have a separate preschool entrance kind of to the northeast of there to kind of create a separation between three different types of vehicular traffic there. And again, just to give people options when they enter the site here. Again, this is a building that's going to not just be about the school, but we want to make sure it's connected to the community. We're going to connect it through sidewalks and the bike paths to the West Side. And then lastly, when you look at the features that this site plan has, it's very important that we start to look at how do we start to zone all of these students and create separate areas for them to be able to have those playground amenities. So one of the main features to this is allowing quick and easy access to the various playgrounds that you see in those red circles, helping to kind of define certain age levels of kids that'll be using each of those playgrounds. The next thing we wanted to look at, we wanted to make sure that we had, when we talked to the visioning group, green space and exploratory type play was very important. We wanted to give some buffers around the school and green space so it wasn't, you know, it was a pleasant place to be for the students. And so we created a lot of green area around the facility to kind of give it that openness and that sense of, you know, being outside and have that accessibility to the exterior. And then lastly, obviously, with the master plan itself, everything to the south and southwest is going to have very readily accessible, it's going to be very readily accessible to all the other amenities. So there's that synergy of the future middle schools and the elementary, all being able to use this site cohesively and kind of use it as a kind of this wonderful place for all of the students to come here and the community to use. So from a planning standpoint, what we did was we really, this is what you see now, but there are plans to kind of connect both from a drive and a site standpoint, everything to the south and really kind of bind everything together when this is all said and done. We also have plans for parking and additional areas for people to use, the athletics and the gymnasium and some of the other community spaces that are in the facility. And then lastly, with the school being, we want to make sure that we are planning space for future growth of the school. So that green space that we talked about earlier is again adjacent to the building, so future expansions could happen, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't limiting the building to any future potential growth that might happen. So moving on to the actual floor plan here, this is the shape of the building right now. And really, when we started to explore how this building was going to shape up, we wanted to take the comments and the visioning group and really focus in on how do we build a community? And one of the reasons or one of the things that was desired is that closeness and proximity. So instead of doing a single story, it was determined that going to a two-level school that kind of helped all the students be closer together was going to be advantageous for Beatrice. This layout here is kind of the floor plan underneath there, and it's a two-story school, and it allows for students to use almost any part of the school very easily and excessively for that equitable part of the goals that were discussed here. So zooming in on the floor plan, you see the upper level there and the main level floor plan. We're going to kind of break this down and kind of go over zone by zone and how we program this out and some of the features of the floor plan. First off, again, two levels. The efficiency that's there was kind of one of the drivers, less travel time, and closer program adjacencies are all the things that you're going to see as we walk through that main level here first. So this is in the large version of that main level. What you see here is those three distinct entrances that will be used for the beginning of the day and the end of the day. And again, the school will be kind of secured during the majority of the time. This main vein here is going to be the main access as people enter the site. So depending on if you're in the north or south entrance, all the students and all the public would have the same experience as they walk through the building. But most importantly, the admin area has been located in a very centralized location to see anybody that's going to be walking up. And from a security standpoint, gives them the biggest range of visibility for the, for any visitors coming in. When we talked about proximity in that two-story scenario, what you see here is kind of a diagram of all the vertical circulation. And as you can see, we have quite a few areas that allow for that vertical access. And so again, students don't have to go very far in order to access any one of the programs in the facility. And then lastly, just from an overall perspective here, safety being on the top of our minds here, we wanted to figure out how can we make this a safe place and kind of keep areas that are private versus areas that are public and separated for those students? And so you can see here, the school has been partitioned off into basically three or two distinct zones. There's a semi-public where people enter and kind of see again through those secure entrances. So you see the commons, the gyms on the north, the admin and some of the other functions on the south there as semi-public. But those private areas you see, the red areas, are going to be where the bulk of the academic work is happening and bulk of where the students are going to be. And those areas can be partitioned off and closed off as needed throughout the day. Also importantly, from a safety standpoint, the orange area to the right there is dedicated space for the FEMA shelter. That's going to be primarily located in the preschool that we'll visit here in a second. So looking outside of the safety portion of it, the building lays out very efficiently. When you look at the core space, the area that most people will be visiting, you have the main entrance and the bus entrance on the north. You have the green commons area that's attached to the kitchen area. The gymnasium is to the far north there, and the utility mechanical area is located on the northeast portion, so they have close access to the street and the utilities. Outside of that, the area that is kind of that other semi-public area is the, all of the programs that are not core classrooms. So you see the admin going from the center on out to the west. You see the admin, art, band and music, and that innovation center or library is kind of centralized in that facility here and in this portion of the building. And again, that recess access, we're using all very convenient access to recess since that's an activity that happens often throughout the day. So starting from the grade levels here, it's a very sequentially based plan. To the far east is the preschool. It's a 10-classroom preschool that has all the programs that have been discussed throughout the various meetings. The red outline that you see there is the FEMA shelter again. But the important aspect of this is that entry to the north and that separate entrance for those students, and then two separate recess access points for them to get out and utilize the playgrounds that you can see to the south there. Moving over to the northwest there, we have the kindergarten and first grade wings there, along with all the associated special education and the collaborative spaces that are going to be associated with that. So you see the blue represents special education, green represents kind of shared collaborative space, and orange represents classrooms. On the upper level here, you have basically that same scenario times two. So what that looks like is on the northwest is the second and third grade, and again, very similar scenarios with very close adjacent sees to the other program spaces. And then the fourth and fifth grade again is a very similar scenario there, but with different needs and different programs that are adjacent to them. So they have that a little bit different variety of spaces and programmatic needs catering to their uses. And with that, this is kind of a comprehensive view of that upper and that main level and the comprehensive floor plan for the building here.
Next one is talk about a few of our design concepts, starting with the interior, and then we'll look at a few images of the exterior of the building as well. When we started off this process, we did a number of what we call kind of visioning activities with the administrative staff and some other staff members, where we looked at educational spaces and even some non-educational spaces, talked about what we did like and didn't like. And one of the things that came out of that process were kind of these three key design concepts. Matthew's already talked about a couple of these, but it was a goal to have a collaborative education environment, that there's equity for all, all students, all staff, and that it's a child-focused environment. And so these were all concepts that we continue to come back to as we work through the plan and the design of the building. So to touch on those just quickly from a collaborative standpoint, we talked about ways that we can have small group, medium group, large group areas where staff can pull students out of the classroom and have different sized environments for them to work in. And so you'll see here in kind of that bright green space, we pulled out some flex classrooms, some small group areas, more so as we get to the upper grade levels based on kind of the way they teach those kids versus the kindergarten and first grade. We also, as Matthew touched on, have kind of the innovation centers. We have one on each level that's kind of centered to the building. It's the media center, it's a technology area, an open kind of concept where staff can bring students into these areas and teach them in different environments. In terms of equity, we talked about it both for being a school that's accessible to all students and inclusive, but also providing similar opportunities for all. As an important part of this was bringing some of those shared specialized classes into the academic wings instead of having them separate from the academic areas. So you'll see ACP, speech, resource, vocal, music. It was important for us to keep those kind of centered to the academic, excuse me, the academic wing. And then lastly, the biggest one was child-focused and wanting to create a warm, playful environment and one that's encouraging exploration. I know another concept that we came to a lot was asking what's the best solution for the students and not what's easiest for the staff. And that was something that kind of came up quite a few times as we kind of worked through the plans and design of this project. And then child focus was also looking at the scale of the building. This is a much larger building than the students are used to, and we have a lot of little students walking through here. So looking at ways that we can break this down into a more manageable scale. So we have the big school, the learning community, smaller grade levels, teeming areas, and then even the smaller group rooms that we talked about. So different scale of the learning environments. This slide is starting to show some of the interior concepts we're using to drive the design of the building. You'll see here imagery that's coming from Nebraska. There's been talk to about pulling more from the Homestead National Monument or even the Capitol as part of this. So you might see different imagery in the final product, but this is kind of a concept. The thought with this is that each grade level would also have its own color, and that has to do with wayfinding as well and making this building easier for those younger students to navigate. And you'll see those colors kind of start to show up in kind of the floor colors and floor patterning at the entries to the classrooms and wall paint and wall finishes and also some of the graphics throughout the building. And then the public areas kind of draw all of those colors in together, and there'll be some kind of small reading nook areas, kind of focused again on the child scale and providing them some little nooks to pull off and read. And this again is kind of showing some bigger floor plan concepts showing all of those colors. And then from an exterior standpoint, this is some initial rendering showing as you approach the main entry from the south. So to the left is kind of the academically, the vocal instrument music wing. In the center is the entry and the admin area, and then to the right would be the preschool. As we come around the building, we have the gym off to the left and the academic wing off to the right. From a material standpoint, we're looking at a furnished masonry unit and also a fiber cement board product. This is kind of a closer view of the main entry. So there's a metal panel overhang. And then a view of the preschool entry. Another closer up of kind of the north gym entry. That's one of the main entry. And then this is one of that end of the academic wing on the west side. So again, trying to get some light, a lot of windows, some daylight, natural lighting in here, but doing it in a controlled fashion and using materials that are going to be durable and low maintenance for you.
So we touched on safety, security. We touched on equitability. And efficiency is also that third hallmark that we're really trying to be cognizant of. We won't go into all of the details here, but from a building efficiency standpoint, there's been a lot of work and a lot of investigation on how to make it the most for the dollars. And some of the things that we've done from a design team standpoint is kind of simplified that structure so it's a very efficient structural system. You're not paying for something that, everyone wants the building to stand, but we want to do it cost-effectively, and that's how we're trying to approach this. We've reduced the envelope of the building. Cladding and envelope is expensive, so we're trying to utilize that cost and put it in the inside of the building where the students are going to be and where you're going to appreciate most. So we're just kind of tightening that up. There's a lot of operational savings here that we've been talking about, both from just the use and the programs and how we're going to be able to share some of these spaces. And our partners, Housman, has been invaluable in trying to help look for additional efficiencies throughout the building from systems and other just types of construction to help again drag the cost down so we can get as much for the funds that we do have available. So there's a lot of things going on with the efficiency, and that's a hallmark again of what we're trying to do. These are just some of the big picture ones. And then lastly, timeline. I know there's been a lot of work done this year to get to this point. So we want to kind of give you an overview of what that timeline looks like for the design and the construction. To the left here, you can see 22 when it started, and that design process started early this year. That red line signifies kind of where we are right now. And what we're looking for is doing a mass grading package here in the coming months. What that means is you're going to probably see dirt moving, which is a great sign. And the bulk of the construction will start to happen probably in the spring of 2023 where the building will start to be constructed. And that process takes from the beginning of 2023 to the fall of 2024 is when we're anticipating the opening of the building. So a very simplified timeframe, but a lot of things going on from now until that fall of 2024. So from a next step standpoint, I know there's communications to the board. We wanted to give you an update. I think there's some other communications that are happening. So that is in the works right now. I know from a community standpoint, there's going to be some interest in what's happening and what that development has looked like. So that's kind of another next step. From the design team standpoint, there's still development happening right now as we speak to try to again push the budget down and help with cost further design some of the spaces. We still have meetings with key user groups that still need to happen and will be happening here. And then plans for that final groundbreaking or that groundbreaking date so we can kind of share in the culmination of what this building is going to be and kind of celebrate that threshold there or milestone. With that, I'll open up the questions.
Any questions?
I would just say that if you're thinking about questions, don't be afraid to ask. A lot of these things have been concepts that we've been working on for a long time and trying to get to that part of get out of schematic design phase. And so really, that's, that's almost kind of where we are, is the building has, has taken on a plan now to what makes the most sense to those three terms that we've used throughout the entire conversation, which is safety, security, equity, and efficiency. And so we've now reached what we believe to be as a building that supports those three common themes. And we wanted to bring you up to speed. The high vision planning team that was part of all of these discussions getting us to this point got to see this last week or the week before, I can't remember which one now, but they got to see it all. And then the next step, as Matthew pointed out, was to bring it to you and show you kind of where we are. And then the next step will be to share it out with teachers tomorrow morning. And then from there, we still have a lot of details to be discussed and be determined yet. And a lot of that just is based on detail-type decision-making and detail-type getting information to certain costs of things. So as that all comes to fruition, there will be more communication, there will be more sharing, but this is, this is where we are now. As I look at some of these pictures, especially the last four or five of them that show the building envelope and the outside projection, it's extremely exciting. I will tell you that when they do the fly-through, which we did not have tonight, but the fly-through is a three-dimensional version where you actually are either around the building, we haven't been able to get inside of yet, but from the outside, you can see the entire building and from an aerial perspective, see the site plan. That's pretty exciting as well. So a lot of these things that you're seeing tonight are thousand-foot views of where we've come to the idea of what the building concept will actually look like. But if you have questions, feel free.
It's nice to have a visual, just see it start to come together. Super exciting for our kids. I'm really looking forward to this.
Have we got funding for the FEMA shelter yet, or are we going to?
You know, everything's been submitted, all the applications, all of those types of things have been submitted. But the one thing we know with those types of applications is a long-waiting period, which is true of a majority of the grants that we've applied for too. The 14th of July, we will hit a 60-day mark with one of the other grants that we hope will be very important. And we know that we have not been kicked out in terms of that grant, but we haven't been told anything else. So we're waiting on that as well.
So how many students can fit in the tornado shelter?
It's being designed for, I think it's about 1,300 right now. And that's looking at both the student capacity and we ran a number based on kind of the gym capacity as well. And that covered both of them, but most of each other, but it's added over the two.
As far as security goes, could you discuss a little bit about how the entrances are set up for security at the main entrance as far as like a buffer zone where if someone does get in, they can be locked down or secured to certain areas?
Yeah, I think some of the security stuff is some topics I won't want to get into a little bit more depth going forward. But the main entry certainly an air hole would be to have all of the exterior doors locked throughout the day, have visitors come to the main entry, and we will have a secure vestibule there where a visitor will be trapped here on the main entry until someone allows them further into the building. There's also additional features that we can talk about, of trying to compartmentalize the building inside. There's some things we can talk to about glass and glazing and hardware as well. We just haven't added those details, but there will be a secure vestibule.
I think another important answer to that question is that as we look at that main entryway, the administrative offices are at the forefront of that main entryway. And the window scheming is that the receptionists or the secretaries that will be sitting at the reception desk will be able to see the entire entryway and parking lot and who's actually coming up to the building from that main entryway. Of course, we know that there's more than, than one door on the building, and there's got to be, but the backside entryway that you saw would be mainly it's a managerial issue. It would be open for the first portion of the day and then shut down. Anybody that wants in has got to come around to that front side of the building. Good question. At one point, Matthew mentioned that the semi-public and the public portions of the building would be also separable with what we hope to be, you know, almost building would be also separable with what we hope to be, you know, almost single instantaneous shut offs to the building. So if there was a breach of the building through any entryway, there would be security that would prevent them from going to those private portions of the building with almost instantaneous measures taken at the front office.
Are the classrooms larger or smaller than what are there now? And are the preschool and kindergarten rooms larger or smaller than the other classrooms?
I think looking at from a younger to older, obviously the younger students have a larger classroom than the older students. And I think from a comparable standpoint, the preschoolers, just looking at them, they have a larger classroom than what they currently have, plus some of the other kind of amenities spaces that they have outside of their classrooms that are readily available.
So they're the same size or the, what about like the fourth, fifth grade classrooms?
So the fourth and fifth grade classrooms are in the mid eight hundreds. And I think when you go down in grade levels, it starts to get larger and up to the nine, 900 square foot or 950 around. That isn't including some of the storage and some of the other spaces around those classrooms.
Do you know what they have now?
The one space that I can quantifiably say at Lincoln, there's a classroom over there and those typical rooms I think are just shy of 900 square feet, and that's the entirety of the space.
So these will be a little smaller?
They're going to be very comparable, so.
But they'll have outside, they have some storage space, built in storage space as opposed to?
And if you look at Lincoln, you have two of the walls are not very usable because one of them is all storage, the other one's from an entry standpoint. So there was an effort made to be able to utilize the wall space to display and learning environments there. So we're trying to capture those spaces because we know, we're trying to basically make those spaces more efficient with what we have.
What does the BLAST program look like at this building? Is that something that's been discussed yet?
Uh, yes.
I figured so.
Yeah.
Is there a separate area for that, or is it?
Predominantly, as it functions now, the after school program functions in like the kitchenasiums that we so affectionately call them. So how it will transition is because the commons area now will be able to be utilized by almost 300, 325 students at a time. That will serve as the general meeting place for the after school program and the gym right next door, however they choose to manage that. But then also with the access to the innovation center, the band and music room and the art room, which are, I want to make sure I specified, there's a band room, there's a music room and an art room. And so any one of those three rooms along with the innovation center can also serve as utilization spaces for the BLAST program, along with the commons and the gym as well. And there's a storage room right there by that commons area for the BLAST materials and so forth that we'll be willing to share with them.
Share. And the important question is the sinks are outside the bathrooms. That is the most important question I've learned from elementary teachers this time.
There has been a great deal of discussion about making sure that's the case.
I remember that, that was quite the. Are the, there seems to be a lot of collaborative space at the upper grades. Does that limit then what they can do in the classroom, or you just use that space differently?
That has, the collaborative space really doesn't limit what they can do in the classroom, it just kind of allows them kind of a vessel to go outside the classroom and to get some enrichment basically.
How many people would fit into that collaborative space?
Well, technically, some of those are sized very similar to a classroom, so they can also be used for kind of a whole classroom activity if need be. And some of those areas are part of the innovation center on the upper level especially.
What if a speaker wanted to come in and address all the fifth graders? Would there be a space for that to happen in?
There was, yeah, there's multiple areas in the facility that could house about, let's just say 150 students or so. The gymnasium, the cafeteria would be two of the areas that could be set up for that. But the innovation center too is a very large space and kind of centrally located and depending on the situation could be utilized for kind of the grade level activity of that.
But there'd be access to computers and media and stuff at that, okay.
And for clarification purposes, what we're referring to is the innovation center also probably in previous history, we would all know as the library. But as changes have happened over time and the things that will actually be in that innovation center, there will obviously be the media selections that we currently have in terms of books, but then there'll also be access to computers, there'll be access to other, the maker space materials that we have will all be able to be utilized really without a whole lot of, outside of scheduling, without a whole lot of maintenance requirements from our staff. So it'll be more readily available along with the books that we typically know the media center is having or the library is having. So it's, we were having a hard time wrapping our minds around that space and what it really was. And Pat made a suggestion that we go visit a school where they're actually, they actually have this and it's built and putting it, they're putting it into action, they open this fall. And it really helped to do that because then we were like, oh wow, that's pretty cool. So it brought that vision of what the innovation center, media slash library would look like. And it's really all of those things in one.
And there's a separate entrance for the gym on the outside, so people don't have to troop through the, if they come for evening practices or something like that.
And that can all be, again, that can all be shut off. The other thing that you didn't see on here, we talked about the playground services, not to change too many gears, I get really excited about it, but the north side of the gym, we've received, thanks to Lori Steerwall and the work of our PE teachers and our elementary principals, we've received the Project Fit America grant. We know that now. It actually is designed to be implemented, not this coming fall, but the following fall, and it will be on the north side of the gymnasium. And it's almost like a miniature American Ninja Warrior course that is, comes with its own PE curriculum, its own equipment and so forth that the PE teachers will be able to access just by going out the north side of the gym. That structure will be out there for them as well. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Jamie, Matthew, Pat, thank you so much for being here tonight and giving us a preview of where we are. We know there's still a great many number of things to do, but we appreciate the working relationship and how you've worked with us and our staff in terms of getting us to where we are at this point. So we really appreciate you being willing to come down tonight and safe trip back home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on. Now it's the time for public forum citizens request for comments. And with the new process we have in place, I have one card that's been submitted to me to speak, Sabrina Glenn. So you may come forward. And tonight we will go with five minutes. And I'll let you, you start talking, I'll start the clock.
Sabrina Glenn Beatrice. So I would have sent an email, but several of you don't like to respond to them. So I have several things I'd like to address tonight. First and foremost, that being the elephant in the room. When I sent the email about the CEP program, I was not pointing fingers. I was not disregarding the work of the board or the superintendent. I was just trying to figure out why the heck we hadn't heard about it. To the three board members who did call me and have great conversations with me, thank you. To the four who apparently didn't have enough time, shame on you. If you don't have enough time, then don't sit up there. There's enough time to respond back to an email. As we go forward with that, I do look forward to hearing more about this CEP program because it had been in front of Wymer's school board since February. So when the email that I got from Mr. Alexander was about the, let me see here, the district food manager should have started that. The district food manager is not who brought it to the Wymer school board. It was the superintendent, just so you all know, because I did spend a little morning on the phone doing my homework. So the other part of that would be this email. For those who did read it, I understand I am running for school board, but while I am not up there, I am a community member who has had two kids go through this school, who has three currently at this school, and will have two more go to this school. And that email was highly disrespectful from your superintendent, and I hope that it was addressed because I have shown it to other members in this community who felt the same. So I just want the board to understand is that how, that is how you're being portrayed if you're not standing up for those things by letting it known that that's not okay. So that's all I have. Definitely look forward to hearing, I heard we got an extension, so I'm excited for that and hopefully our kids and parents and community can get some free and reduced meals this year. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we will now move into the discussion portion, starting with review policy 5008, attendance policy and excessive absenteeism. Mr. Alexander.
Okay, so it's very similar to what we had earlier with the student fee hearing. We don't actually have to have a special hearing for review of policy 5008, which is the attendance policy and excessive absenteeism policy. It's just required by state statute 79209 that the board have a chance to review that policy and ask any questions or express any concerns that they might have about truancy or excessive absenteeism. So that policy has been provided for you. You know, the key parts of it is, and I think it's important for the community to understand that we are under statute in certain regards to make sure that if we do have students that are excessively absent or truant, we have an obligation after so many days to report them to the county attorney. That's a requirement of our principles by the state that we have to follow through with. You as a board may or may not be aware of all of those things, but that's one of the big ones that seems, big ones that seems to come out frequently is that parents have been reported for their child not attending the school. And so we are required by the state to report those things and then follow up with each number of days that a child is, has not met the appropriate or has exceeded what would be considered an appropriate number of days to be out of school. So no motion, no action needed, just the opportunity for the board to review the policy and see it as required.
Okay, any questions? All right, next is review policy 5415, anti bullying.
Okay, again, very similar process. According to state statute 79 dash two comma 137. And the Nebraska legislature, every school in the state will offer an anti bullying policy in their schools, and it must be reviewed annually by the Board of Education. As with all of our policies, this and the attendance policy, as well as all the other ones that we have, they are written with legal requirements to meet state statutes and also supported by our law firm that's in place to help us make sure that we have the appropriate requirements in those policies and that they meet state requirement and we are following them as presented. So as a board, you are required to review and this anti bullying policy as well.
Okay, any questions? All right, next up is community eligibility program. Mr. Alexander and Dr. Nielsen.
Okay, so as Dr. Nielsen is coming up to the front, a few things that are, I think are important to note about the community eligibility provision, and I think they'll pop up on the screen here in a minute, but just a quick reflection as to how we got to where we are, because I think that's important to understand. First of all, every school district in the state, and I don't know about the country, but has the ability to participate in the national school lunch program. This program's been in place for many years and all families have the opportunity to complete free and reduced lunch applications to waive costs and fees. And we'll talk about how that's, how it's determined if it's a free lunch, reduced lunch, or so on during the presentation. But free and reduced lunch rates impact almost all other programs and funding sources and grant opportunities for the district. All students have received free breakfast lunches for the past two years. I think that's another key point. Pre-COVID, pre-COVID, there's been a process in place for many years, and I think some of the dates are in here, as to how parents can access free lunch program through the national school lunch program. In 2014, or excuse me, in the last two years, the USDA, because of COVID, has provided free lunches to everyone, to every student in the nation, as long as their school participates in the national school lunch program. So the past two years, everybody has been getting a free lunch, $12 billion project through the federal government. Next year, and we say this with what we think is correct and accurate information, but last year, we did not know that free lunches were going to take place until late July, first of August, almost right before school started. We got notified that the USDA was going to again provide free school lunches. Next year, it's our understanding at this point that the USDA is returning to pre-COVID practices. So there's a process in place where people can apply for free or reduced lunches through that process. The community eligibility program is a little bit different from the standpoint of how it operates. And so I think that's probably where we want to set the stage is creating a clear understanding, because I don't even know how many people out there understood that because of COVID in the last, the, how the federal government handed that and handled that in response to providing free meals, everybody in the nation received free breakfast and free lunches. So with that stated, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nielsen.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the community eligibility provision. If you look at the slide, if you look at the site on Nebraska Department of Education, the definition of CEP is it's the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. It provides an alternative that eliminates the need for household applications for free and reduced priced meals in high poverty districts and schools. So it was a program that was available nationwide starting in July 1 of 2014. Beatrice Public Schools has never participated, and when it started in 2014, Mr. Alexander, myself and Mrs. Holthis, were not in the district. So I'm, we are not sure of what conversations happened in 2014 with the current administration. But there are some things that as we go through that might shine light on why we maybe have not participated. So are there benefits? Absolutely, there are benefits to the community eligibility provision. It increases that access to nutritious school meals. It facilitates implementation of creative meal service models like the grab and go kiosk. However, I will tell you, Mrs. Holthis has been phenomenal and has added that because she knows students need an option when they arrive to school late to just grab and go and get to class. It reduces paperwork because no students have to complete free and reduced lunch paperwork. We ended up with an email that we have 800 some, approximately 850 students that have already been eligible, that are eligible for free or reduced lunch because they are direct certified. And I will kind of go through how that happens, but that is the piece that these families, these 800, and some families will not have to complete paperwork at all. And participating schools are guaranteed to receive the same free claiming percentage for four years. So there are benefits of the community eligibility provision. How it works, this is not a grant application that we can apply for. It is a provision where they say you're either eligible or you're not. It is a provision where they say you're either eligible or you're not. And so that is where we are at. Eligibility is determined for an entire district, a group of schools, or a single school. Well, in Beatrice Public Schools, it's a group of schools. So we currently have three schools that would qualify for the community eligibility provision. You have the Beatrice Community Preschool, Paddock Lane Elementary, and Lincoln Elementary. Those are your three buildings that currently qualify. And they have to have, over 40% of their students have to be direct certified for either free or reduced meals. So that is how you qualify. So how do students qualify? How are they direct certified? If they are direct certified, that means that the family receives SNAP funds. That means that would be the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. They qualify for SNAP. They qualify for TAMP, which is the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Cash Assistance. It's also students who are certified for free meals without applications because there are students that are certified automatically that don't have to qualify for SNAP or TAMP because they are on Medicaid. They're in the foster care system. They are part of Head Start. They're homeless, they're migrant, or they are a runaway child. And so those students automatically qualify, no questions asked. If a child would come to us and look at us and say, I am living at my best friend's house on their couch, because they aren't welcome at home, we would automatically go into the system, mark them as homeless, and put that as free lunch. So that is, that is how it currently works, um, with us, because we already direct certify as well with the National School Lunch Program, just as we would with the community eligibility provision. Currently, students who are not direct certified though, because there are families that are not direct certified, they fill out free or reduced lunch applications and therefore then they qualify based upon the household size and the household income. That is how we determine qualifications. And, um, students who do not automatically qualify can fill out the application. You have the application in front of you. It looks like a very lengthy packet, however, there's one page, it's page number five, which you guys have front and back, so it'd be the front page of three, that you complete. So you list your, the students that you have in the school, um, list your, if you have kind of the assistance programs, you list that, but then you list the total household gross income, you sign it, and then you send it in. And then everything is determined. I will tell you, our secretaries and our food service representatives do an amazing job of making sure that families that need this have it and families that need it work to fill it out.
Couple, couple of points there in regards to the food service application, free and reduced application. It's, it's an application that has been there for years. As pointed out earlier, the, the application has been there for a long time. I think 2001 may, or even before that possibly is when the National School Lunch Program started. But it goes out about this time every year, and it will be, it will be emailed out to parents, and then parents can fill it out and bring it back to us anytime they want to, but there's kind of a key date in there, which is September 23rd. And that September 23rd date, anyone that qualified, filled out this application and qualified a year ago, then gets free and reduced lunch meals up until that day. And then after that day, they can still turn it in, but they don't get credited for the meals up to that day. And so it's kind of important that, that parents fill it out and bring it in to us from the standpoint within that time period if they want credit for those, those meals from August 13th or 11th to start of school up until September 23rd. At any time during the school year though, anybody can fill out one of these applications and turn it in.
The other piece that, um, with the application that it does is it does waive fees. So for example, if I'm not direct certified and I am wanting to have a ride on transportation, I would need to fill out a form in order to have that transportation fee waived. So that is the thing, is we would have to have that documentation that you do qualify for free or reduced lunch to get those fees waived. So any activity fees, any classroom fees, the fees that we talked about at the hearing, if you fill out an application or if you are direct certified, those fees would be waived. So what must districts do? Districts must, or schools must, meet a minimum level of identified students for free meals in the year prior. So April 1st is the deadline of when they take those numbers, when they get the percentages of which students are, which students qualify, which students do not. You have to agree to serve free breakfast and lunches to all students, and you have to agree to cover with district general funds, so non-federal dollars, any cost for providing free meals to students above the amounts provided by federal assistance in the eligible schools. Through this program, the federal government will cover 80%. They will reimburse 80% of the breakfast and 80% of the meals. The district then with their general funds will have to cover the 20% of breakfast and their 20% of lunches that are offered, and that is for all students. Okay. So let's look at the data. As you look at the data, um, I have included free and reduced lunch percentages for 18, 19, up until this year, and you can see there's an asterisk by 2021 and 2122. Those are the two COVID years. So no students at that point in time had to fill out free or reduced lunch forms unless they wanted fees waived. If they did not direct certify, they had to fill out an application so that they could get their fees waived. So you look at all six schools are listed, starting with the preschool, going all the way up to the high school. As you look at this, um, I'm going to focus on the 18, 19, and the 21, 22 school year. So there are, we use free and reduced lunch rates for about everything in our district. And I will tell you, free and reduced lunch rates are, the higher the free and reduced lunch rate, we know that we have more challenge, but challenges, but we also know that we have more opportunities. We have more opportunities for funding, we have more opportunities for grants, we have more opportunities for programs to bring those into, to offer our kids. So, um, the preschool was a 63.45% in 18, 19, and 21, 22, they are at 56%. As you, as you look at Lincoln, Lincoln's pretty similar. Paddock Lane saw a decrease from 59% to 53%. Stoddard was 56% to 50%. BMS, um, the middle school is 45% to 40%, and then the high school's 44% to 35.60. So you can just see with parents not filling out forms or not having to, our numbers did decrease, our percents did decrease. If you go to the sixth column, the CEP 21, 22, so this is looking at our community eligibility provision percentage, and this was taken from August 1st, or April 1st, sorry, starts with an A, April 1st, 2022. So that is the date that this percent comes from. So if you look, Beatrice Community Preschool, Lincoln Elementary, and Paddock Lane, notice that they are equal to or above 40%. So they, therefore they qualify. Now, on the form that the state sends out, they also include schools that are close. So Stoddard is at 38.86% and the middle school's at 32.73%. So those two are close. The high school's not close at all, and that why, that is why the number didn't, was not included. The interesting thing that I found as you looked at the data is if you look at 21, 22, Lincoln Elementary was at 61.53%. So this is all students who are direct certified plus the families that filled out applications. Notice that there's a 12.56% difference between the direct certified and the families that filled out the applications, even when you go down to Stoddard. Because I will tell you, we were kind of, when we looked at the data, we were shocked that Stoddard Elementary was not, did not qualify. So Stoddard Elementary has 38.86% of their students that direct certify, of their families that direct certify, but when they fill out the applications, they're actually at 50.47% for free or reduced lunch. So that's an 11.61% difference. So it was just interesting looking at because of the discrepancy between the two. Okay. So as we look at the data, now there are things to consider. So, um, if we look at the things to consider, these are just pieces that we've got to take a look at, we've got to evaluate as we determine, is the community eligibility provision right for Beatrice Public Schools? Because we know what is right for one school may not be right for another school. What is right for one district may not be right for another district. So districts must pay with general fund dollars for all students, whether they are free, reduced, or full pay, at all buildings that qualify for this community, community eligibility provision. So the district would pay for, if we chose to move forward with the community eligibility provision, it would pay for the students at the preschool, Lincoln Elementary, and Paddock Lane, all students to have free lunch and free breakfast. It would pay for that 20%. Applications will not be completed at each of these buildings. So we would just look at the CEP percentage as being our go-to percentage. What then has potential impacts? And I say potential because there are some places where it may not be a lot, but then there are other places where it may impact us even more. And there are some potential impacts that might be a little bit more positive, but then there are others that would be negative. And so as we look at this, potential impacts could be untitled building funds. Our buildings are sorted by their percent of free and reduced lunch and the CEP and direct certified, and they're sorted based upon their funds. So for example, right now, Paddock Lane receives most, or receives a large majority of our title funds. Well, we have four title staff members at Paddock Lane. If Paddock Lane's percentage goes down, because their direct certification goes down, they may not, it might be Lincoln Elementary or Stoddard that receives most of those funds, or a larger majority of those funds, and then Paddock Lane may not. We might have to shift things that we currently have in place. State and local grant funding. We qualify for grants based on district free or reduced lunch percentage. The interesting thing that, as you look at the middle school, the middle school was in 18, 19, 45%. In 2021, they were at 52%. Last year though, they went to 40%. There was a grant that we were trying to get to middle school. The middle school needs new uniforms for athletics. There was a grant that we could have applied for if we had 55%. The trend line from 18, 19, to 19, 20, to 20, 21 was heading up. And so we were moving up from 45 to 52, but last year it decreased. Was that because we didn't have to fill out applications? I don't know. It could have been. I mean, that could be a hypothesis, that could be a theory. I don't know. So, but it was kind of an opportunity that we thought we would have qualified, but when we looked at the data, we were not able to qualify for that. And so it was a missed opportunity, and there are some state and federal grants and local grants that do base it upon your free or reduced lunch rate. After-school programming. We have an awesome after-school programming. I know that they did an amazing two-day trip to Camp Jefferson. Our BLAST coordinator helped take care of that, but we also had BLAST summer school this year. Those are programs that could be impacted by loss of free or reduced lunch percentage. Poverty funding, state aid, and then the fresh fruit and vegetable program. Fresh fruit and vegetable program is another grant. Again, it goes by based upon 50% or higher. I will tell you, right now, we have a large majority of our schools that opt that qualify for the fresh fruit vegetable program. And what that is, is in the afternoon, on two or three days a week, all of the students get fresh fruits, fresh vegetables. So it's a nice little snack that they get before the school day ends. Okay. So CEP possible impact to state aid. As we look at 21, 22, and 21, 22 CEP percent, I just pulled out the elementaries because I, the elementaries and the preschools, I wanted to look at that PK through five. So with our CEP percent, the state does try to equalize things out because it realizes that you're only focused on your direct certified. So it wants to make sure that districts should not lose because they choose to go CEP, they choose to be a part of that program. However, when we talked to Bryce Wilson at the state, he said, it depends. Because it focuses more on a state average, you could be a winner, but you could also be a loser too. So as we look at that column, here is what we did, was we took the CEP percent times that 1.1. So that is the multiplier that they utilize to try and equalize things out. So you can see for the preschool, the 54.42% 42% times 1.1 moves you up to 59.86. That is great. That is fantastic. Okay? It moves us up past what we are. Lincoln Elementary, 48.97%. That one moved us up to 53.87. Currently, Lincoln Elementary is at 61.53%. So that 1.1 did not help us with Lincoln Elementary. With Paddock Lane, again, we see it did help us. So it moved us from 50 to 55, to 55%. At Stoddard, here's the thing, they do not give the multiplier, so we just moved over that 50.47%. So when looking at this, we take 21, 22, and we find the average free and reduced lunch rate. That would be 55.44. So that is the average PK through five free and reduced lunch rate without the CEP, without the multiplier that's just currently as is. Then we move over to column three, and you can see with the multiplier, the average free and reduced lunch rate is 54.80%. So when we utilize kind of where we would land with TOSA, the difference between the 21, 22 and the multiplier of, with the CEP is 0.64%, and this is a minus 0.64%. So that is approximately $34,000. That would be less in our state aid. So we would lose that if our CEP rates, and this is what they will be for next year, would stay and the multiplier would be a part of it. Okay. So what are other things to consider? Our lunch program is currently self-sufficient. So our lunch program sustains its budget based upon reimbursement from the federal government, full and reduced pay families, and all-acart items. That is a large way that they sustain their budget. And the piece with the food lunch program, with our school lunch program, is that it has to stay in the white. If it moves to the red, then our general funds have to cover what is lost and to make sure that it continues to move and operates in the positive. So the lunch program purchases most of its own equipment. There are times where we will split the cost. It does repair its own equipment, so all the equipment throughout all the buildings, it repairs when things need. It also pays for its own staff. So all of the lunch program staff are paid for with Dawn's budget. Additionally, the lunch program pays for a portion of the elementary secretaries because they are a large help in our school lunch program, Paris, who are also another large help in our school lunch program, and the food truck driver's wages. And the lunch program pays for all food utilized to provide nutritious meals for students. So as you can see, our food lunch program sustains itself and tends to pay for a lot so that they can continue to operate.
Just a point of emphasis, when we say self-sufficient, Dawn does an incredible job of operating her program effectively. She schedules, she orders, she manages delivery, she, during the COVID time periods, she has done everything we've asked and more. So, but I think the important thing to understand is it's completely self-sufficient. The general funds, the only time, and you'll hear in my administrative report, my superintendent report later, typically the only time we have done anything or been asked to help the lunch program in any way, shape, or form is if there's an equipment situation that happens that we may partially use. An example of that, and I think in January or Feb, I don't even remember what month it was, but we had a water heater, a very large water heater that went out. We, that is about a $10,000, $15,000 fix, and Dawn came to us and said, part, most of that hot water comes to my kitchen, but some of it also goes to other parts of the building. Will you help me pay for it? So we did. Now ironically, we have a similar situation we're working with right now with the other hot water heater, very large hot water heater in the kitchen that supplies partial water to the kitchen, but maybe more so the south wing of the high school, and also the water softener. So Dawn and Roy have been in conversation with Lamell Plumbing about how we fix this and what it looks like. So we've, we've gotten some basic estimates on that at this point, and we're, we'll be moving forward on that probably in the next month or so, because we need to get it going effectively before school starts. So the, the point being self-sufficient is truly the description of the lunch program. the description of the lunch program.
To clarify, the funds that are used for wages, don't elementary secretaries and parents help with lunch? So that's reimbursement for the time they help with lunch, not just their...
Hundred percent.
Okay, all right.
So why have we not utilized CEP? Why maybe did the other administration choose not to? These are things we know why, we see some pieces why we maybe have not chosen to utilize the community eligibility provision. We see reasons why maybe previous administration chose not to as well. So as you look at this, funding sources could be lost, reduced, modified, adjusted, and those are some things that have caused concerns. Title I, poverty funding, there are a lot of staff members that are paid for with those funds, a lot of staff members. State funding, so the loss of state funding is another piece. You know, and it may be only $25,000, but it's still $25,000. That's para. As the fresh fruit and vegetable program, again, another great thing we offer, but if we don't reach that 50%, that school would not necessarily qualify for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. And grant funding, there are a lot of grants out there, but in order to apply for the grants, 55, kinds of 50, 55 sets you over the edge. And when you start getting to that 60% too, that again pushes you to the next level. So those are pieces that we've looked at. But we also know that with our current program, the National School Lunch Program, all students have the opportunity to fill out the application. All students have the opportunity. All families have the opportunity to qualify for free and reduced lunch, which then not in turn, I mean, it in turn just takes care of their lunch, but it also takes care of the fees that we assess in our district. And as Jason talked about, family, they can fill it out online, they can mail it in. So there are many different ways to get it accomplished. Everything will be mailed out in July and benefits will expire on the 23rd. And then the equity piece. Currently, we have three out of the six buildings that qualify. We have another elementary that does not qualify. So one of the questions becomes, will we allow Stoddard families to transfer over to Paddock Lane? And at this point, the answer is no. We have no room unless you qualify for medical reasons, unless you would qualify for behavior need or our ACP program. That would be the only way you could transfer over to Paddock Lane. So our Stoddard families would not receive this opportunity. And do I think it's... Go ahead.
But to be clear, any student that, let me get this straight, any student that is direct certified and/or applies for free and reduced lunch will be able to eat breakfast and lunch for free?
Absolutely. At Stoddard Elementary, yes.
Okay, the only people that really this would impact negatively are those people that do not qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Yes, so the full pay...
Or on income, based on income?
Yes. And the reduced families would have to pay a little bit.
Okay.
Because reduced families, you pay a portion of the meal. So and I think it is right around 40 to 50 cents.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The other thing about this slide before we leave it is every one of those other programs listed up there is truly a grant program, which means it's specifically tied to our free and reduced lunch number. Poverty funding, it's interesting because poverty funding is in the TOSA formula, but then there's also the poverty program that's supported by the federal government. But it's a fund, it's a grant application that we have to actually get online and fill out. So that's the case with all of those listed up there.
What is the impact on the budget? Because that is the one thing, what is that 20%? So as we look at it, because we know we have to cover with non-federal funds, so you would be taking out of the general fund, the expenses for three buildings that qualify. So the expenses, they would total $62,531.92. And what it would look like is this is based upon last year's reimbursement rate. The federal government has not released this year's reimbursement rate, so we are not sure where this year, but we can approximate and say this is what last year would have cost us. So the preschool is, would cost us $2,804. Lincoln Elementary would be $17,133. And Paddock Lane would be $36,744, plus some cents for all of it. So total for those three buildings, for the three buildings that qualify would be approximately $63,000. Now, if we said, you know what, we wanted to make this equitable, we wanted to offer this for everyone, which would be amazing, if we could offer it for the other three buildings. Okay, what would it cost us if we could offer it for those other three buildings? So the total for the other three buildings would be $126,195.99. So you look at Stoddard is right around that $23,000, middle school's right around the $43,000, $44,000, high school's right around the $59,000. So that is based upon the number of students that ate meals last year and using that reimbursement rate from last year. So the total cost of the district, if we chose to do all six buildings, would be $188,727.91. So and at this point in time, if you look at the total cost for the three buildings that qualify at $62,000, but you also look at that $34,000 that was reduced in state aid, you're looking at right around $95,000 to $100,000 impact on our general fund. So closing considerations, I think we have to look at costs versus equity. So does the cost outweigh the equitable equitability? Or is it, do we want to have it equitable for all? Do we want to provide the cost for all? What do we want to do? Is the cost too much for the district to endure? So those are some things I think we have to weigh as we look at this. There is a system currently in place to offer assistance for all of our families who qualify through this National School Lunch Program. We also know that every district is different. Every school is different. What works for one may not work for another. And other grants, programs will be impacted. There are positives, but there are also negatives to those impacts. And I think if we look at providing the community eligibility program, what maybe service or program would we want to reduce so we could add this cost in? So are there some other places that we could look at taking money from so that we could add this piece to the general fund? Questions? There's been a lot of information.
Besides Southern Public Schools, what other districts in our area or in the ESU5 region are utilizing this program?
Southern. At this time, there's only one. And across the state, I think you have maybe approximately 13, 15 districts is what I would say. I would have to go back and research that number even more, but I know it is not a large majority of the school districts utilizing this program.
Southern's poverty rate is quite a bit higher than Beatrice. Is that correct? Do you know?
They, I think that they are pretty close
Okay.
To our percent, I really do. I think that they are right in that 50 to 60% range. And I think, but both of their schools qualify. So their elementary qualifies and their high school qualifies as well. So that helps that their whole district qualifies because then they can do it for all kids and all families.
With that state aid impact, you came up with 34, almost 35,000. Would that be added on to the $188,727?
Yes. Yeah, because that was not included. Yeah, that was just the cost that we would pay to cover lunches, so that 20%. And then at the Stoddard Middle School and High School, it would be the full what the reimbursement is not covered for everyone else.
Would there be any potential state aid impacts if you did add the middle school and high school? Because I know this slide just shows the pre-K through five. Would that $34,000 or almost $35,000 increase if, for example, your free and reduced applications did not exist because they didn't have to fill them out?
At Stoddard Middle School and High School, they would still have to fill them out or they don't, well, they wouldn't have the choice again. So your numbers could potentially drop. The only reason that they would need to fill them out if we were going to pay for their lunches would be to pay for or to cover fees. So that would be the only reason that they would need to fill them out. So you could potentially see that drop continue that you saw during COVID, during that second year of COVID relaunches.
They need to fill them out for BLAST.
But that would also...
They need to fill them out for BLAST. You're right, yes.
They do.
Yes.
I mean, that's, I think, that is the reason we got the grant, period. That's the reason kids went to Camp Jefferson last week, period, because they filled out those forms and the rate was high enough. Yeah.
But that potential $34,176 could be higher when you started adding the high school and middle school.
If those numbers drop off and they don't fill out their forms, yes.
So I think to answer John's question, yes, at 188, total district...
Yeah, it'd be up over $200,000. That would be losing total.
Right.
Well, I would agree. In the last two years, when they didn't have to fill them out, it has impacted our ability to apply for applications. The other thing is, you know, I always find it interesting when they say it's free because it's not free to everybody. It's free to the people who are actually receiving it, but it's not free to our taxpayer because our taxpayers would have to pay that. The other concern I would have is that we are at the top of our levy. We're at $1.05 for our levy. So we would absolutely have to cut somewhere. And generally, if you look at our budget, it's always in the personnel area. And I think that would affect our children's learning and their education if we ended up starting to cut staff people so that everybody would have a free lunch, even those people who do not qualify. And the other thing is, I really think, I have a hard time not being equitable. So you know, if I were going to look at this, I would say, you know, I don't know that it's fair that we don't do it for every person in the district. So you know, and you're picking and choosing based on which building they're in. So you know, the equality is an issue for me. But again, cutting staff...
I think that not equitable is important because you have a lot of families who now, because of the way Lincoln and Stoddard is split within the, that can have students in multiple buildings.
Yes.
So in this instance, I could have a son or daughter at Lincoln and somebody at Stoddard will only, Lincoln gets the free or the free lunch, but not Stoddard. And then the same thing with the equality there is with this potential, and again, just doing the math, if we did the entire district, 25,000 plus, when we need to come up with budget cuts, would equate to either programs, services, bus routes maybe, title teachers, then that doesn't become equitable for everybody else, in my opinion.
But it could potentially be more than that, if losing funding for other programs because of this.
Well, and I find it interesting that you brought up busing because it was something that I looked at because, you know, we had talked, at one time, can we offer free busing to everyone? Well, free busing again is only given to those people who are utilizing it. We don't have a $781,000 line item in our budget because it's free. Somebody's paying
So if we did utilize this program, would the students, the families in the schools that don't qualify, then would they still be eligible to fill out the paperwork?
Yes.
And if free or reduced?
Yes.
Other schools?
Yep. So they would still be, so Stoddard Middle School and High School would still have the opportunity to fill out the paperwork.
How does this program work? Do you have to, like, is it for a certain timeframe or is it per year?
It is per year. So every year, they look at that April 1st data snapshot and then they determine it. So that is the other reason why exactly it can fluctuate. One year, it could just be the preschool that qualifies. The next year, it could be three schools. The next year, it could be all four. And so, you know, there are things that now, if you say you want to go with the program, they would keep it for four years. But you apply for two years and then you can get an extension for the last two. But again, it could waver with, when we're off, we could say, okay, no, we're going back. Now we're back to, you have to fill out the forms. Now we're back to, no one gets free lunches anymore because no school's qualified. I don't know if that would ever happen. And I think, but again, I don't know how many families were direct certified six years ago. I mean, that's the other thing is, I do see our poverty rate has increased. We see the needs for our students have increased. And so I don't know what the percent was in 2014. I don't know if we had schools that qualified, but we may have had one. And it may have been our preschool at that point in time. So those are the answers that I don't have. And I could probably start digging deeper and asking the state to send me their data. But at this point in time, I've not asked for all that historical data to look at that.
So that just adds another level of uncertainty depending on if we did participate in this program. We could have additional costs year to year, just depending on who qualifies and who doesn't.
So in 2025, how will it look when we're in one school?
That I think we will have to figure out because it might be an opportunity we might be able to take and afford at that point in time. I think it will just determine how everything works when we get everyone together. And I would assume, if you look at the data, that we should meet that 40% direct certified. So then it is, okay, what is our, if you get the number high enough too, then it becomes 100% is completely paid for. So that's the other thing is if we can get it to where the multiplier puts it at 100% or above, then it's 100% paid for. So I think in districts like...
And then no, no district funding to...
No district funding. So a district like Omaha Public Schools that has a 75% free and reduced lunch rate and receives, you know, title funds, but also their elementaries, they have a lot of their elementaries where it is 100% reimbursed. And it is no cost to the district. So those are some things that we will continue to keep our eye on because absolutely, if it is 100% reimbursed, I'd say, let's go right now. Let's sign the papers. Because I do think it is a great opportunity. I just think we just have to look at the full picture as we make this decision.
John, I think your question is very pertinent from the standpoint that that's what really separates Beatrice from maybe some other area schools that either do qualify or, and utilize the program and don't, is just what, how many buildings they have in their district, how many qualify, how that impacts their overall funding. There's just a lot, a lot of details that go into this. And, you know, a lot of it, you have to, you have to actually be in the position to understand it all. And so we've taken a lot of time to discuss this, but I think your question really demonstrates how, from one school to the other, to apply certain programs to one school and say that works in this school or that school, it's an exercise of utility. Because what may work in Beatrice may not work at Norris, it may not work in Lincoln, it may not work in Tri County. So that's really what it comes down to is the people who are taking a real in-depth look at all these things have to take all that into consideration. Now in the future, could that possibly be the situation where we're in one school and we have a very high direct certification? Because I think that's the other thing to differentiate, is that there's two programs. There's the National School Lunch Program that everybody has the ability to apply for. And then there's the direct certification program or the CEP program, which quite honestly, we just get told that this is the number of students that are directly certified. They are going to get a free breakfast and lunch no matter what. They directly certify. And then from that point, we either choose to participate or we don't.
So for the equity of all students, we wouldn't even be able to use the CEP program that way until the fall of 2025, since they don't consider it until April 1st, they do the planning. Or can we use it from April 1st to September 23rd? Or is it just when we start from school year?
That would be something that we would have to discuss with the state is to, as to, okay, we're now combining all of these schools. How do we do it? What does it look like? What is the formula? How does the formula work? And so those are things that we will definitely talk with the state about because there are things that will change, our title funding, or, you know, we'll adjust based upon having everyone together. And so those are pieces that we will definitely look at and work with the state as we make that move.
I think the one thing that's stable in this more than anything is there's a process that's been in place for a very long time. And we've, when I say we, I mean, public And we've, when I say we, I mean, public education, public schools across the state in general, have always encouraged people to take part in that program. Fill out the free and reduced application form. It's a win-win. It helps you, if you qualify, and it helps your school district. Because the more applications we have, the more grant capabilities, like Jackie mentioned, the uniform grant, that's one of many, then, with a higher free and reduced lunch rate, we stand a better chance at getting those. With that, we also have a higher TOS reimbursement and a poverty portion of that. We also qualify for more poverty funds from the federal government because of that. So it really comes down to those things.
Any more questions? Discussion?
I will say, I think the discussion was really good. I mean, I think it was information that was valuable for all of us, and will help us in lots of ways moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Jason and Dr. Nielsen. Now we will move on to the action portion of the agenda. And the first item on the action is community eligibility program. And Mr. Alexander, anything else you would like to add?
No, I just think it's a decision as whether you participate or not participate in the CEP program.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 not participate in the community eligibility program for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Thank you, Doris, and we have a second by Aaron. Is there any further discussion around the CEP program?
I just think it's important that people realize that all students who complete and qualify for free and reduced lunch will have a free breakfast or reduced price for breakfast and lunch. That no child that qualifies will be denied. I think that's really important.
I will just add to that and say, quite honestly, we don't even see those applications. So if that's anybody's concern, we don't even, we don't even see them.
I think the biggest thing that I just want to, you know, again, hitting on the equality piece is, looking at it, you know, I would love to say we could do this for the entire district, but obviously, that's not possible with the amount of funds that we would need to pull out in general fund, which then in turn comes from our taxpayers. But it also looks at, you know, even right now, with what I would perceive as the inequality with our buildings as it stands, with only certain services being offered at Paddock Lane versus the other elementaries and preschool. With, obviously, we are taking care of that with our, you know, new building plan as the architect just presented. That really brings that equality back into each of the buildings, or at least the one building. So at this time, we'll be, you know, would definitely be interested to see, as we move forward and we look at this on a yearly basis, do the numbers change? Does it change when, as John asked, when we do consolidate? Then we reevaluate that time.
I think along with that, I just would like to ask the question, as a board, this discussion's never happened before, I'm presuming, on the basis of the conversation, the information presented, you'd like to have that presented to you, or have that discussion as we continue to move forward each year? Good.
Yeah, I think the numbers are important for us to see.
Thank you for all of the research and work into looking at this for the district.
And I'd like to just, I'd like to thank the people out there that brought this to our attention, too. And I think it's a, it was a great point, what program works best for one might not work for another currently, at this time, for us. And also, you know, as a parent, I think about if my child wasn't in one of those schools, how that would feel. It's kind of like an isolation feeling, and I think at this current point, it would not be best for our school, but in the future, with the new school, something we could approach.
Is this something that we can purchase paid in at any time? So like, when we're consolidated, is this something that would need to be decided before the school year begins? Or could you determine maybe in December that?
Well, they decide, then.
It is, but it is also, you have to deter, you have to decide there's a certain date, and we got an extension this year.
Okay.
So next year in April is when numbers will be released, and that's when the data will be discussed. So probably April, committee of the whole, is when we will bring it back. And then we'll just update, and then we would have to make a decision by that probably May, or maybe I think would be the smartest time to make the decision. So we'll look at it April, that timeframe, as we look in the future. If the dates are different, I know they take the April 1st, but if they don't get us the information until later, I'll let you know. And that is all.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate to review it every year at that time. All right, any other comments, discussion? Okay, real quick, just we, since we had discussion, the motion is, the Board of Education of District 15 will not participate in the community eligibility program for the 2022-23 school year. So a yes vote on this motion means we will not be participating. No vote, you do not agree with that. Can I have your votes, please? All right, motion passes, 6-0. Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of policy 5416 student fees, appendix 5416, and 5416A. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve policy 5416 student fees and appendix 5416.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion, anything to add, Mr. Alexander?
Just, this is what the hearing is all about. We're just asking for your vote to reaffirm everything that we discussed regarding student fees.
Okay, any other comments? All right, can I have your votes, please? And motion passes, 6-0. Next is reaffirm safe return plan. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 reaffirm the safe return plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Aaron. All right. Jason and Dr. Nielsen, any comments?
Just quickly, as you may recall, when we originally wrote the Safe Return to School Plan, the federal government and the IDE require a review of that every six months. So we reviewed it in late January. It's time for us to do that again, pertinent as we approach the start of school, which, as everybody knows, is coming quickly. But at this point in time, we don't feel like there's any necessary changes to make to that safe return to school program, or plan. We feel like it served its purpose in 21, 22, so we have no recommended changes at this time. And the main reason why they require that review is simply because there's ESAR funds that tie to it. And if you make any changes in how you're going to expend those funds, then they want to know why, and make sure the Board of Education knows why.
Okay, did I give any questions, comments?
Yeah, just, I think the plan was solid and is solid. The only thing that I questioned, and it's not just through COVID, I've always had an issue with having vaccination clinics in the school. I know parents are busy and they can't get their kids to get vaccinated, but is there anything in place to where the school is protected? Say like, there's, someone gets the wrong shot at a vaccination clinic, and there's an adverse effect, or a student goes into shock immediately after getting a shot? Is there something in place that protects us, you know, a liability, so there's no liability?
Very, very good question. And the answer to that is yes, first and foremost, as with all vaccines that we provide on school site, which there are others, everything is volunteered and permanently signed. And in that, that signature signing off, parent agrees that school is not liable. The other protection that would be in place, as with all other vaccines as well, none of those are given without medical staff directly, either providing the vaccine or on-site to provide any assistance that might, might be required because of allergic reaction, or, like you said, whatever unforeseen thing there would be. So all those are in place. Good question.
Okay, can I have your votes, please? And motion passes, 6-0. Next, approval of the Special Education Contract with ESU V for the 2022-23 school year. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the Special Education Contract with ESU V for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. And Mrs. Hookstrad, do you have anything? Oh, you're right in front of me, sorry. We're sitting out there.
That's just our standard yearly contract with ESU, provide some vision services, PT services, and our deaf education services. They're not full-time, so we do contract with ESU to provide, provide those services. So not much change for this year, for most.
Okay. Any questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? Motion passes, 6-0. Next is approval of the inter-local contract for enrichment activities. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the inter-local contract for enrichment activities with ESU 18 for the 2022-23 school year.
Thank you, I have a second.
Second.
Second. You're up again.
So this one's a little different, it's through SNRP, which is a Southeast Nebraska regional program, and they provide deaf ed services. Now, we do receive our direct services through ESU V, but this is like an additional service, it doesn't cost the district anything. So say we have some students who are having trouble with their hearing aids, their chargers, things like that, or if we need the assistance of an audiologist, then SNRP sends those people down to our district to work directly with our staff and students. So it's really a beneficial service. We don't utilize it at the time, but when we have had to, it's been great. And again, like I said, it's not a cost to the district. We really appreciate it.
I think the other thing that's important to point out there, Beth, not to, not to step on your toes or anything, but the ESU number 18 supplies that service. So it's a, it's not directly from our ESU V here in Beatrice. Just for clarification, that's not a typo, that's where that service comes from.
Any other questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? And motion passes, 6-0. Okay, next up, approval of the contract for Emily Zarbiniki, occupational therapist, for the 2022-23 school year. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the contract with Emily Zarbiniki, occupational therapist, for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments, Beth?
So this will be the second year of contracting with Emily Zarbiniki. Last year, we added this as a .5 FTE, because our OT, our occupational therapy numbers in the district have just grown dramatically. And so, we moved from one full-time OT and two OT paraeducators to one and a half FTE certified occupational therapists. And it has worked out wonderfully. I know Cory, no, the other OT, Craig Lee appreciates not being pulled through six different buildings and in-home services. So it really has been beneficial, and Emily did a great job and enjoyed working with BPS. So we are renewing that contract, basically.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? Motion passes, 6-0. Next up, approval of contract with Tanya Bus for nursing services for 2022-23 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the contract with Tanya Bus for nursing services for the 2022-23 school year.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Beth, you're up again.
This is, was a new contract last year. We have a student who has some significant medical needs. And a lot of times, we have, we're able to meet those needs through the assistance of, like a one-on-one paraeducator or personal assistant. But because of her needs, we do need to have a nursing staff dedicated solely to her. So this is continuing the nursing contract, one-on-one nursing contract for the 22-23 school year.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? And motion passes, 6-0. Thank you, Beth.
Beth, before we leave, thank you very much for everything you do in our SPED program. I know at times it's a daunting task, but you're dealing with precision and expertise, and we appreciate it greatly, so thanks for being here today.
All right, next up, approval of maintenance pickup purchase. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the purchase of a maintenance pickup for up to $28,000.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Alexander?
Okay, so as you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time. Roy's visited with multiple leaderships in locally and across the state. We're trying to work as much locally as we can, which is the current situation. The pickup that he currently drives is a 1996 version, and as Terry drove it for years, it's been in the district for years. I don't know how many miles actually it has on it, but Roy currently uses it the majority of the time now. Literally, the other day, I rode it in that pickup, and it has two gears left. So as it shifts, I was questionable if we were going to get to our destination. But we made it, made it back, the frame's been welded, the gears are about shot. We, it is our major, one of the major portions of our snow removal process. So the reason I put $28,000 on that is because we've tried to maintain a $25,000 budget for this particular item. But our first quote on the pickup was right around 27. We're now underneath of that $25,000 range, so it may be a little bit different than that, but that would be the extent. Now, I do want you to know that we also priced a brand-new comparable, 2022 F350, and it's priced at $48,235. So we did try and do an analysis in terms of, we're getting a 2017 with a lot of miles on it, but it's in good shape versus the cost of the new vehicle. And you can see what the demand of used vehicles has done to the cost of used vehicles, because we're talking about almost half, or about half, of the cost of the new vehicle. So I just wanted to point that out to you. I will tell you that with the number of vehicles we are looking at having to replace because of our recent hail damage and storm that came through, it makes me a little bit nervous to spend $48,000 right now on a new pickup. But if you tell me that's the best way to go, we'll do it, we'll figure it out. But I would recommend that we go with the 24 499, or, excuse me, 24 944 that's been quoted to us.
Okay, any questions, discussion? All right, can I have your votes, please? All right, motion passes. Next up, approval of the 2022-23 Classified Staff Handbook. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve the 2022-23 Classified Staff Handbook.
Second.
And we have a second, Mr. Alexander?
Okay, basically, we received some recommendations after approval last month in regards to clothing that maintenance personnel is required to wear, and some of the, and we supplement that a little bit. So we've made some small terminology changes that would, and we'd like to enact them for the school year, for the school year. So basically, we're bringing them, we're bringing the classified handbook back to you, just to make sure you're privy and informed of that change that we would be making.
Like what?
Well, for instance, one of the things that's required is that our maintenance personnel wear coveralls or trousers. And what's been asked is, can we change that to jeans? So, and there's a $125 stipend for them to purchase clothing materials, certain clothing materials. So jeans is one of them, and it states coveralls now, but we're saying, if you want coveralls, that's okay. You're still going to get the same amount of money, but if you want jeans, we'll supplement with jeans. So that's one example.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? Motion passes, 6-0. Next up, approval of co-op with Freeman for girls wrestling. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of District I move that the Board of Education of District 15 approve a co-op with Freeman for girls wrestling.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Brown?
We were approached by Freeman about this like earlier in the year. They have one girl that wants to wrestle, and so we kind of approached the same way that we did with the swimming co-op, that we will take the total number of participants and our total cost by having our participants and then send them a bill. We will identify as Beatrice, who would not be Beatrice Freeman, just because of one participant, we wore our uniforms. They're responsible for getting the athlete to our practices. They'll be able to responsible for us getting them to their events, but that's all part of the, of the application that there would be billed for. So it's a good opportunity. The girls wrestling is growing very quickly. There's, I have not seen a total number of schools have added this year, so it's growing faster than these probably have in the state right now.
Good, good. Any questions? Comments?
So say that this catches on and we get some more Freeman athletes. Are we going to have enough room in that wrestling room for?
No. We're squeezing her right now, so.
So would Freeman be possibly helping build a new facility?
As a, as a, as a concept, the other thing we have to look at right now is there's just one classification for girls wrestling. And the sport continues to grow. I see that being split up. And so kind of we, we look at things, the eye look at things is before we do enter a co-op, we'd have to see what the numbers are. If that would bump us up a classification or not, because we don't want our kids wrestling in higher class because the school is not actually part of our, our district. So that'd be something we'd look at going up and down the road. We've had some Congress, a couple of whole community members approach us about a wrestling room. I just got a text message from one of them last night. They're like, hey, when do you want to meet? I said, you guys tell us, and we'll make it work. There is some talk in the community of fundraising for a wrestling room.
So would Freeman be a part of the coaching squad, too?
We, we use our coaches, and that, that, all those, the, the salary and stuff would be divided. Jackie keeps a detailed, we'd have created a budget code for that, but Jackie keeps all that. The way we do for swimming, she keeps all that, and then she gives it to me, and then we divide up for number of participants. It'll be a scheme. It actually probably going to save us money because there's not, you know, if we have 12 girls out, that'll just be split by 12. You're carrying quite a bit of cost for one, one person.
Any other questions? All right, can I have your votes, please? Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, before you leave, thank you very much for organizing all those conversations and everything we do on a manual basis to keep our activities programmed. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next up, administrative report.
Okay, so in trying to be respectful of everybody's time, I know it's been a long evening, and we've had multiple conversations about multiple topics tonight, so I'll try and be quick. First of all, vehicle and roof damage. Roy's been working furiously with the adjusters. We have a roofing system that was put in predominantly on the two schools that were damaged the worst in about 2009-10 era, and there's warranty left on those. So there's a whole lot of complex situations going on in regards to the roofs. The vehicle estimates we know are for either repair, for repair or what the damage is, is about $61,000 to $65,000. That's the amount of damage that's been done to our fleet. We're not sure exactly what vehicles will be considered a total loss or which ones will be repairable yet. That's still being worked out with the adjusters, and we're waiting to hear back from them before we move forward. But we do know that there, there are vehicles that we have right now in our fleet that are not usable. So as we experienced with the pickup, the point that I want to make to everybody, including any of our staff that might be listening as well, that impacts how much travel we can provide. And I mean, obviously, Roy and Larry are going to do absolute best they can to make sure everybody gets to where they need to go, but advance notice is going to be very important. And as we found out with our pickup, with availability shortages and other schools that are in very similar situations with multiple damage to multiple vehicles, finding those vehicles is not real easy right now. So as I sit here tonight, Roy's texting me, he's at home looking for vehicles to be, to replace. And we're, we're also in conversation with our local dealerships as well, so just, so we all know that. I mentioned the hot water heater and water softener at the high school already. I don't feel we need to recover that except for we're looking at the combination of about $20,000 to replace those things. And as we also mentioned, Dawn is willing to pay for a portion of those. However, in this particular instance, the kitchen does not, the, the hot water heater we're talking about does not necessarily provide as much hot water to the kitchen as does the southern end and wing of the building at the high school. The water softener, on the other hand, is a different story. So we're still trying to sort all that out. NSA and Heat Globes, Mr. Brown, feel free to jump in on this if I, if I don't provide enough or if you have additional information. But the NSA has contracted with a company to provide each school district in the state with what's called a Kestrel 5400 Wet Globe device. It's a tripod that, to, that mounts up on, it mounts on a tripod, and the device then is used to analyze the actual, a more accurate heat index reading. And it's used primarily in outdoor sports to be able to determine if it's too hot to practice or too hot to play. The NSA is covering the cost of one of these globes for each district in the state. And we just received notification that we're one of the first ones to get it. They did a lottery system, and we happened to win. So hopefully, we win others. But in short, there, there will be training at the coaches' clinic for it. Mr. Brown's made arrangements to pick it up. And then we'll be putting it into use and training with our coaches as we get closer to fall outdoor sports. Anything?
I'm, I'm picking it up tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay.
We're going to learn about it.
Yeah. A new device.
New device.
KSU TAB, just, if you remember back in May, I think we updated you in the, that we're working with the KSU TAB organization to analyze the old elementary schools and what to do with them, and also to help provide information on how to apply for grants to make them either A, reusable or B, ready for sale. Those representatives will be here this Wednesday, and they're meeting with a faction of school representatives, myself included, to talk about and tour Beatrice as a whole. There are also a faction of city community members that will be part of that tour as well. We're trying to bring the entire Beatrice community together to look at all the brownfield areas and get feedback from KSU TAB as to what we can do with those areas moving forward into our future. So that will be a semester-long project. It will start with the first meeting this Wednesday, and then it will culminate in December with a report back from architectural students as to what those buildings might be suited for. Empers Audit, real quick, the Nebraska Public Employee Retirement System. In the last 12 weeks, Jackie Bornlawyer has been working diligently with the Empers. We were selected for an audit, and she's been working very closely with them. We do know, we, we've received some of their findings, but we also just found out today some of the requirements they're going to make for us moving into the 2223 school year. And this will primarily impact our classified hourly workers and also our coaches and how they report their hours. So when the Empers does an audit on you, it's a very in-detail audit, and it happens to every school district across the state at some time or another. Mr. Schlieder, I'm sure, has been, has had experience with that and can speak about it as well. But it's a very in-detail audit. It's much like a visit from the insurance company. They, they find something, and then we have to fix it. So we'll be making those fixes as we move into 2223. And I'm sure some of them will not be very popular, so I'm saying that upfront. Finally, the Family Advocacy Literacy Grant. We were contacted by the National Center for Family Learning and asked to apply for the National Advocacy Literacy Grant. Basically, in very quick summation, the grant will provide $40,000 in the first year and $30,000 in year two to help us enhance four specific years in our district. One is family literacy education. Two is adult learning. Three is parent time, what they refer to as parent time, and four is child education. So we can use it for all of our literacy needs and help with our community in literacy needs. But we're, you can also include it in enhancing your current programs that you have, like our EL program. So we, we have talked about that. We're in the process of, that grant application is due this Thursday. And so Lori Steerwall has been working with us to, to get that grant application in place and done. We've been meeting with the elementary principals, but just so you know, that's out in the forefront, and we will know about that hopefully in the coming weeks. Right now, that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? All right. Our next meeting, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be August 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the administration building. There will not be a Committee of the Whole meeting in July. The agenda for the meeting, which will be, shall be kept continually current, is readily available for public inspection at the superintendent's office during normal business hours. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It is with great pleasure that I move that the Board of Education of District 15 adjourn.
Then we have a second, and your votes, please. And we are adjourned.